Welcome, everybody, here and to get started on our June 3 Newton Planning and Zoning Meeting. First thing on the agenda is the minutes. Any regular chance to look them over good?
I've moved their approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next one on here is we're to consider a variance for lots in Fox Ridge. Justin, you want to take that over?
The requirements for legal publication and notification have been met. The following are staff applicant comments based on standards for granting variances. A, explain how the variance request arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or applicant. The applicant commentary, the total gross square footage of each lot with each being only five foot narrower width than other lots in the Fox Ridge development puts them just under the 10,000 square foot, however, not so much that the structure built upon the law would impede upon the existing easements, setbacks, or other zoning regulations. B, explain how the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents. All structures will still comply with the existing easements, setbacks, and other required building codes, regulations as already exist on the zone. Granting of the variance will simply make the exception to the slight difference in total square footage on the each lot under construction, 9,000 square foot versus the 10,000 square foot requirement. C, explain how the strict application of the provisions of the zoning regulation of which variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. The mission is to provide a greater investment to the city of Newton per lot as well as an alternative lesser expensive rental home option for the Newton resident to solve the current overwhelming need. This can be made possible financially by allowing for the cost construction of a triplex build as opposed to duplexes due to the cost of construction. Strict application will prevent this investment. D, explain how the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. The applicant commentary, despite the minor change in total lot square footage allowance for such construction, all other aspects of the project will abide by the same desired city ordinances and regulation as to protect the general welfare of the variance, sorry, the public health, safety, moral, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. This variance would positively impact the city of Newton in that respect. E, explain how the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. The building will still respect and comply with all other zoning regulations. The current zoning regulations already allow for such construction of slightly larger lots. As such granting the variance would not oppose the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. A variance is not to be granted if one of the above conditions is not met. Variances are not for correcting mistakes that cause the property to come into noncompliance with a particular code requirement. Variances are not for situations where complying with a particular code is inconvenient or more expensive. If the variance is granted, the properties would be able to construct multifamily units on lots 10 through 15 of block 10 with less than 10 square feet of property per lot and the attachments are as follows. Got to remember that the Fox Ridge plat has already been approved along with the R3 zoning at a previous meetings of the planning commission for these lots that are in question tonight in discussion. The variance is required because these six lots fall just short of the 10,000 square foot requirement for a multifamily, which is a triplex that the builder would like to build. City staff is in support of the variance being requested. Recommendation, planning commission can either approve, deny, or reduce the variance request.
Is there anybody, is the applicant here or any representative for Legally Homes? If you'll step forward, please, and state your name.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. My name is Mason Davis.
Do you have anything that you wanted to add at this point in time?
No, not necessarily. Overall, the goal, looking at the city of Newton, I've done a lot of research here lately. My wife and I, we've got properties in Derby and we like Newton because it's a smaller town and there aren't, there's a bigger need here. And when you look at what's available, they're all 1,500, $1,600 a month. So I thought, well, what might be better if we could provide, you know, a three-bed, two-bath, new construction home to fill a need that from people that I've spoken to seems to be pretty apparent. Anyone trying to buy a home that can't afford it, anyone that wants to rent a home can't afford it, building a triplex opposed to a duplex would provide that opportunity, which would also give a potential renter in the city of Newton, either somebody that lives here now or would like to move here, save them hundreds of dollars a month in rent, but still get a nice new home. And I think that there's a desire for that right now in the city, so.
Okay. Does anybody, commission have any questions for him?
Will this be any government assistance, any of these renters taking these?
No, sir.
Okay. Thanks, we might have more questions for you.
Of course, thank you so much.
Justin, is this a public hearing for this?
It is. And I also wanted to let you know that I gave you another sheet of paper up there, which is a petition that we received last Friday. I also want to let you know that a petition has, it's more information than anything because a petition can't be turned in for a variance. It would be a zone change or something like that, just so you keep the two separate.
Yep, understood.
Technically not a petition for it, so.
Understood. So let's open the public side of this meeting for this topic. Does anyone from the public want to speak? If you do, can you come forward, please state your name and address, please?
Thank you, commissioners. John Van Meter. I serve as President of the Covington Greens Homeowners Association, which is directly north of the property for the Fox Ridge development. We are not against the development. We understand that Newton needs homes. We have industry coming to town. We have people that will be involved with those and places will need it to be lived. However, we have numerous questions about the development. First and foremost is what kind of houses will these be? Are they slapped together, threw up, stick and brick? You know, we, the homeowners in our area just across the creek, you know, we have a lovely neighborhood. Our, we're curious to know if these homes, these rentals, and how will they be managed? Will be a rental management company overseeing the properties? What are they going to look like? Will there be basements not only under them but on the houses that are supposed to be on the outside edge of the property? You know, we've been told it's $200,000, $300,000 homes, lovely homes. We have to question, you know, who's going to want to build that kind of a home across the street from a triplex? It is our thought and concern that, you know, the next variance will be to put triplexes right against the backside of the property line rather than homes because they are small lots, as you can see on the map, they're same size as, that's what we're talking about here, block 10, 1 through 5. You know, the question is, where does it end? You know, we were here previously to object to the R3 grant for duplexes throughout the Eastern Phase 1 of the property. And we still don't know which lots those have been approved for. It is our opinion and thought that will the whole complex be turned into apartments, triplexes, and apartment buildings? Is there no intent to build homes? There's a lot of unanswered questions. It is also our thought that the developer, that this was his intent all along to ask for R3 housing. You know, we were here last time and he was unable to attend to share and answer questions. As I recall, he was hung up by a train, but he couldn't make it, but his attorney was here. We're curious to know what the end result of that development will be. Will there be any actual single-family homes built? I would also state that on this petition, I didn't realize that it wasn't a formal petition because it wasn't addressed to the zoning commission itself, as I understand that Justin stated. But the Covington Green addition has 100% signatures against the proposed grant. As we move forward, I'm sure there will be others to speak and we would stand for questions. Thank you.
My name is Robert Milliman, 1117 Wedgewood Place in Covington Greens, and thank you for allowing us to come and address you. I would echo the questions that John gave you. The main question I have is similar to what he said. When will this all end? Will this be a continual variance until we have apartment buildings, until we have triplexes everywhere? My property is within eye shot of the property that is circled, I mean squared or highlighted with yellow. The developer came through and ripped out most all of the forest that shielded my eyesight from that area, and now I can see directly with just a few shrubs in the way. I didn't buy that property with the idea that there would be multifamily dwellings, let alone triplexes and potentially apartment buildings as a result of variance upon variance. So I strongly hope and plead with you that you would not approve this for a few more tax dollars. Most of us already are paying thousands and thousands of tax dollars. I hope you would take that into consideration and the property values that we have and how the tax dollars that we do give to the city and to the county may suffer as a result. We love our neighborhood. We love the quiet seclusion that was there when we came, and we would like to maintain that peace as much as possible while also supplying the city of Newton with some housing. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you.
Anyone else like to speak at the public portion?
I forgot to mention earlier that if the variance is passed and as we move forward in time and the property line across the street from the proposed variance turns into apartments as well, it would be the Covington Greens' request to put up a 12-foot privacy fence on the property line from points east all the way to the west. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Anyone else like to speak? Yep, come on up.
Again, thank you for having us. Mike Lloyd with 1102 Wedgewood Place there in Covington Greens. And of course, I'm going to echo our concerns about the variances and how many more times this developer will come back for additional variances. But an additional concern, and it might be more appropriate to bring this to the city commission, is the increased traffic flow on Country Club Drive where many of the residents who signed the petition live. And Country Club Drive is not designed for the additional traffic flow that will be coming in on that, especially on that entrance that's coming off Country Club Drive. I know there'll be two other entrances into this development, but how that entrance is placed, there's going to be, I believe, more traffic will come through Country Club Drive than probably these other entrances into that development. And so that's a real concern with the homeowners along there. It's just not designed for that flow of traffic.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we will, oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Michelle Van Meter at 1109 Wedgewood Place. Interestingly enough, we had lunch on Sunday with a young man who just moved to Newton, and he asked where we lived, and we told him, off Country Club Drive. We live over by the old Fox Ridge. And he said, oh, I was going to buy a house on Kansas Avenue, and then I found out that they were tearing that all out and they were going to put a development in there. And he said, I was enchanted with that yard because there was nothing back there but wildlife and vegetation and trees. And he said, I didn't want that. Well, we don't either. I mean, that's why we all bought in that neighborhood was because it was quiet and it, we had deer and we had all these trees and we had shrubs and privacy and property value may not go up for us if these are duplexes. Do you understand where we're all coming from? Most of us in our neighborhood are retired. This is our investment for life. So just think about it for us. Just consider if it was your house, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? All right, seeing done, we will close the public portion of the meeting. So bringing it back to the commission, does commission have any questions?
I have a question for, I have a question for staff, Mr. Chairman, and that is if you could put up the zoning map and kind of show us the buffer between, so we have a colored map in front of us and I just want to make sure that I'm looking at that correctly. There, that, so the upper right-hand corner in the blue is the C2 and, I mean, R3, I'm sorry. And above that is R2 in aqua color. Kind of orient me to that, if you would, Justin, and kind of show me where the property is because it sure looks like there's some, some space between property lines and backyards on the north. Thank you, I appreciate it.
To the properties that are equipped tonight, that's all R3. The people that I believe that are here tonight are up in the top end of the R2 zone and then it will follow down to Country Club Road. That's the, that road.
Yeah, Country Club, yes.
And so the spot between the northernmost lots and the backyards of the other lots, what is that?
Those are all zoned R3.
No, I'm talking about the area that doesn't look like it's platted. Is that green space between the two right there?
That's comment area, that's owned by Covington Greens.
Okay.
And drainage, there's drainage.
There's a big creek that runs back through there.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that.
Between the two. If I may, Carl.
Please.
Present you with this map. This is the highlighted area.
These are the lots right here.
Okay, you know, you got it.
Any further questions, commissioners?
I would just ask, do we want to invite the representative to come up to answer some of those questions? I feel like at some meetings we've talked about those, the entrances off of Connect the Road and off of Kansas. Those are going to be reinforced differently than, so maybe that might help.
That'd be great. Yeah, if you'd like some answers, we'll get some.
Yeah, so to answer some of the questions that have been asked, there will be a homeowners' association in Covington Greens, and I can't speak for the, or not in Covington Greens, but in Fox Ridge. I can't speak for the developer, but he owns those single-family lots on the very north end of Fox Ridge, and he did tell me that he plans to build, you know, like you had mentioned, single-family homes in that, in that price range. I also do have a copy of the front elevation of the plans for what I'm looking to build on these lots. I don't know if you have those or not. I do have a copy, but where do you?
No, I've just, we might show what, I mean, the plans are there.
Okay, just to kind of show.
They want to show.
The plans are there, and then I do have, maybe I should have printed more than one copy, but to give everybody an idea of what it's going to look like, because I too respect property values, and if it doesn't look good, I'm not going to spend the money on it. Because at the same time, if your property values go down, everybody else's property values go down, and that's a lose-lose for everybody. So I want to be on the same page with that.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Commissioners, could I clarify something for you two?
Sure.
And maybe for the public, because we keep talking about developer and that the developer wasn't at the last meeting. The developer of the property is Brian Legally, and he's sold off a few of the lots. And Mr. Davis here is the owner of the lots on the south side of the cul-de-sac, correct?
Correct.
And so he's the builder that will be building these, not the developer of the entire development, just for clarity's sake.
Yes, and the majority of the development already being zoned R3 will be almost entirely duplexes. So with that being said, a $1,500, $1,600 a month duplex may not be affordable for someone that wants to move to Newton or lives in Newton and wants a nicer home. But a three-bed, two-bath triplex, that's a few hundred dollars less a month. The biggest difference there being is there's a one-car garage instead of a two-car garage, but it does still fit.
Do you want to show the public?
But my intention is for it to look, I'm going to invest money in landscaping and windows, and it's going to look nice. It has to look nice, otherwise, like what y'all are saying, everybody's going to lose property values. I want everybody to win. The bigger investment I make, the more we're going to pay in property tax, just like these folks, which is important to me and the development of Newton. There's going to be an increase in utility costs that's a benefit for the city as well by having a third door per lot. Overall, saving somebody a little bit of money on a nice new construction. The only reason for the variance is the lot has 9,000 square feet instead of 10,000 square feet. Otherwise, it's already zoned R3 and would otherwise be fine for multifamily. I think that answered all the questions that were asked, I hope.
Will you maintain the lawn service on that?
The homeowners' association is going to take care of all exterior lawn and landscaping, which is a good thing because it makes sure that everybody gets it done, I think. And I should mention that the neighborhood of duplexes that my wife and I own is just adjacent to another neighborhood in Derby that's next to a golf course, conveniently enough, and I managed that HOA for four years. So I'm riding the same ballpark of making sure that everything looks uniform and presentable and keeps everybody's property values up, and that was a success for both neighborhoods. But regardless, at the end of the day, if this doesn't go through, it's going to be a duplex. And I'd like there to be an opportunity for an alternative option, and so would the developer. And that's the reason for the variance request on that.
My only comment is, I mean, it looks like Lot 10 already would be 10,000 square foot.
Yeah.
Except you actually don't need to.
I didn't know with the easements and setbacks for drainage utility or if you'd consider it or not, but it technically is. And the other ones, I feel like since those are all together, just keep them all bunched together. But, I mean, that isn't a whole lot, much to do there.
The other question I would have would be, you know, for staff, from a planning and zoning perspective, is 10,000 square foot comes from where for R3? Is that a figure that is common for most areas? Does it, are some 8,000, are they 9,000? You know, what are, what are some of the reasons that 10,000 is the number?
And that was when we went through all of our code changes.
Yep.
When we hired the contractor to do that, that's what they came back with us on. And, I mean, they've done all the research and I think we're consistent with the surroundings.
Well, I guess my question is, you know, just from a zoning perspective, regardless of whether, where it's located at.
Mm-hmm.
Why 10,000? Or did it used to be 8,000 here and we went to 10,000? Has it always been? Did it used to be 12,000 and we went to 10,000? You know, that's my question.
Yeah, I believe it was exactly the same in the, in the old regs as it is today.
Okay, and it was that way because that's the way it's always been?
I think it was that, the expectation is that square footage is appropriate for that size of a structure. Now, definitely, you can see some movement, and it is something that's available to consider for a variance where some things are not. But, Justin, I think the other thing you do have to mention is the table that's in the zoning code that speaks to the, there's multiple ways to review this, and they have requested a variance to the multifamily minimum square foot. They could also request to do townhome, single-family, and attach to residences, and the square footage would allow them to go ahead and build a triplex-like structure without having to go through the variance process. But they selected to go through the variance process. And they, we wouldn't even be here because it would be permitted automatically from what's requested in the zoning code.
Yeah, I kind of figured that 10,000 is just, I mean, it's a random number.
And again, like Justin said, the consultant that helped us review all of our zoning code, they look at other numbers and to see if it's within range, and it was, so that didn't get changed.
Mr. Chairman, at the last planning and zoning meeting, I had mentioned that the American Planning Association had come out with a Housing Supply Accelerator playbook asking communities to take a look at minimum lot sizes for properties as housing has been unattainable. And so this is one of the avenues that they recommend, is that we take a look at minimum lot sizes that allow for additional housing units to be built, so that we're not relegating people to live in substandard, sub-efficient rental housing. So I admire them for taking a look at this. And having said that, I would move that we approve the variance, allowing for triplexes on those five lots, six lots.
Can I, can we open it up to the public again to respond to what we have to say?
It's up to the chair. Would you like to answer some more questions?
Sure.
From the public?
Sure.
If you'd like to come up, state your name.
My name is Ellen Hurdler. I live at 1121 Wedgewood Place, and that's right next to Mr. Milliman, who spoke before. There's a couple of things. We are so enthusiastic about having housing built in Newton. I know it brings a lot of opportunities, and we're very enthusiastic about that. That golf course. very enthusiastic about that. That golf course is a prime piece of real estate. We know that, too. Our, the reason we are upset is because all of a sudden, and I don't want you to overanalyze this creek. This creek is just a little tiny creek, and over the years, it's gotten lots of, I don't know, foliage. And so, all of a sudden, we never saw the, the golf course, really, honestly. We never saw the golf course. All of a sudden, I can see the big trucks and stuff back there. And so, obviously, we're going to know that we're going to see people driving back and forth. And if I lived in that area on Covington, or on, what is our street called?
Country Club Drive?
Yeah, if I saw, if I lived close to there, I would absolutely take that road. There's no, if I was on the corner, I wouldn't go all the way through, you know, the golf course to get where I needed to go. I'd take that Covington, Country Club Lane. And I want you to know, it floods, and it's got a big bend in it. And so, I have not been able to get through at times. So, they're going to have to do something about that road to keep it from flooding. But, that creek is just a little tiny creek, so it, it seems like we would be unaffected, but we really are affected. And I really bumped right up to the back of it. And I have grandkids that, that play in the backyard, you know? I want them to be safe, and I don't want to have to worry about them. So, that is our challenge to this. I'm, it looks like, it looks like it's beautiful, really. What you showed me is beautiful. I, I'm worried that the rest of it might not be as beautiful, but that's where we're concerned.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve the variance. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Come back to the commission. Any discussion?
I would just like to, again, speak in favor of the motion, saying that housing opportunities in Newton are truly limited. I mean, it's low-income housing tax credit apartments, or, or, you know, the opportunities to, somebody to move up the housing ladder from some less-than-desirable rental property or apartment to, to what may be their next step in the housing ladder, and it's townhomes, triplexes, then duplexes, then something and something else. So, I'm, I'm in favor of, of the development for this. Go ahead.
I would like to say that I, I understand the public's concern on these triplexes compared to duplexes going in, and the reasoning that I would be for this is it's, it's going to back up to the apartment complex. It's going to be built there. I too am worried about this happening over and over again, from my standpoint up here. But, what I see is this part is, it's, it's close to where the multifamily, where the apartment complex is going in, so it's still segregated in that area, in that, in that part. But, I, I am cognizant of this being tried in other places, and I understand what you're feeling, so. But, that's the reason I think this would be fine in this area.
Yes, sir.
I, I would just say that I understand, too, the need for more affordable housing in our community and all the communities. I do think in this case, you know, the ten thousand square foot number does seem to be arbitrary, but that's something we should look at, and figure out why that number's there, and what, maybe there's a better number, but that number's there now, and so, I'd be opposed to the variance in this situation.
Any other comments? I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Chair. All right, next thing on the agenda is consider a zoning amendment for 300 West Eleventh. Starts on page thirty-five, guys. Justin, I'll turn it over to you.
I'll go ahead and take this one.
Okay.
Yep.
Devin, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep. So, this is just the zoning amendment request for 300 West Eleventh Street. It was put in by Teresa and Rodolfo Quinones. Currently, it's zoned in R1, and they're looking to open up a childcare center, and so, they want it changed to an R3, a multifamily dwelling district. Again, there's, you know, several criteria that we need to look at and make findings on each of the five criteria. Those are all found in the zoning ordinances at Article 1, Section 1.10-4, Subsection D1. So, the first criteria we need to look at is whether this class, this change in classification is consistent with kind of the intent and purpose of the zoning regulations, the city's comprehensive plan, and any other city policies or plans that we have. And so, the staff comment on that one is, you know, when you're looking at or considering a change of zoning classification, for any piece of property, you need to look at whether every use that would be permitted under the new classification, make sure that's appropriate for that property and the surrounding area. And you can't just focus on the use that they're looking at. So, in this one, it's a childcare center. But, looking at the next criteria, you see there's a lot of different uses that could be used for that property. Some of them include a cemetery, a church, I think, a golf course, which, a library. So, there's a lot of different uses that you have to look at and just decide if any of those make sense in that area. And we have the map up on the screen for you to look at. Right across the street, the entire section's R3, so it's pretty close in location to an R3 area. And so, that's Criteria A, is whether it would, that change in classification is consistent with kind of the intents of all the rules. The second criteria, B, is whether every use that would be permitted, if that's compatible with the uses permitted on other properties in the immediate vicinity. So, I think being right next to an R3, I think it's, the change makes sense. But again, you have to look at every single use that is potential there, and so, I'm not going to read off all the uses, but that list is there for your reference. Then, Criteria C is whether adequate sewer and water facilities exist, and whether those could be provided if they weren't. The staff comment is all public utilities are existing, and they're connected to the primary residence, so that's not a concern. Criteria D is whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of these regulations. The staff comment is, we're not aware of any errors in the application of the zoning regs that would be corrected through this. Criteria E is whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changing conditions in the area, and if so, the nature of such change, and whether the proposed amendment provides a disproportionately greater loss to the individual landowner relative to the public gain. The staff comment is, existing sites zoned R1, and it meets the zoning requirements for the, the existing residents. Like I said, they want to change it to a child, to create a childcare center, which I feel like there is a demand in the community for that. So, once again, we just need you guys to make a finding on each one of those criteria. You can even use just one of those criteria to outweigh all the others, and, and that can be the final verdict of what sways you, if you feel like one is more important than the others. But you still need to make some baseline determination on all five. And then, whatever decision you make tonight, whether to approve or deny it, that's going to be forwarded to the city commission in the form of a recommendation. That recommendation will be heard at the June twenty-five meeting.
Thank you. Is there somebody on behalf of the applicant that would like to speak? Come forward, state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Teresa Quinones. I'm the one that's wanting to get this center going. My address is 300 West Eleventh Street. This is something that is dear to my heart with childcare. I started in my home, but when I did start in last August, there were people reaching out to me, wanting to, to ask if I can take in any infants. In Newton, I was just really surprised that there's people that have to take their infants out to like Heston or just other surrounding areas, because there's just not enough in-home daycares they can take. We only can take a certain amount of infants, so that just really laid heart, you know, close to my heart. So, I thought, well, what if I did this? That would help, you know, to where I can take more infants and hire staff and just kind of open up more to Newton, because Newton is growing. And so, I thought this would be something that, you know, open up to the community, and also, I wanted to open up my home as well for breastfeeding moms, stuff like that. I just want to do something for the community that can help, you know? So, it, it's just a big, big thing that I've been wanting to do for the past couple of years. So, I thought I'd take on, you know, this and leave my career where I was, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Just a, just a quick one, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Quinones, you, you currently live at the facility. How many, do you watch kids now?
Yes.
And how many do you watch?
I have a total of nine. So, right now, I have three infants, and I have six toddlers. And then, I was allowed to have three school-aged children. So, that was like for latchkey. So, that's what I have right now. But I also have an assistant, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any other questions for her? We have to have a public hearing on this. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't.
I just thought I'd share as well. So, I am.
Your name?
My name is Sarah Spurgeon. So, I'm with Child Start. We are part of Child Care Aware of Kansas. So, we offer childcare resource and referral to families and also to providers. So, I'm an early childhood specialist that works specifically in Harvey County, and I worked with Teresa a lot. But I brought some, just researched, Child Care Ware puts out a point-in-time data on where childcare's at in the county. And Harvey County currently meets twenty percent of the demand of childcare that's needed in the county. There's approximately fifteen hundred kids whose parents are in the workforce that don't have childcare. And I understand, you know, family and things like that are helpful, but there's clearly a big need here, and Teresa has worked hard to, with her property, to find ways that she can help meet that need. So, I just wanted to share about that need, and thank you.
Very good.
Can we get your address, please?
My address?
Yes.
I'm in Sedgwick County, so I'm 300 West Albert and Mays.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Devin, do we have a public?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing side for this topic. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, back to you guys. Do you have any questions? I think the only question I have is, maybe this is an area, so, does this need to be R3? I mean, what, what's the reasoning that needs to be R3 for a childcare center?
A number. Because in the childcare, she's wanting seven or more.
Okay.
And for a daycare, it's a six or less, because she's getting that higher number. It has to be an R3 zone.
Because of our Newton zoning on that?
Correct. Yep.
So, maybe that's something.
That could be looked at.
That we should look at for, in the future, is maybe there's no reason for this to be R3. Maybe it could be in an R1 and an R2, potentially. Absolutely.
So, under KDHE Child Care Licensing Regulations, she's still technically group home. And I understand that this is different for zoning regulations, but she still meets the requirements of a group home. So, and I, so I think with what I've seen of what she's doing, it's not, you know, a big center we're looking at, just opening up her home to provide more space for, to fill more of that need.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
We agree with that, yeah.
That's what I don't like, is moving that to an R3 just for a simple daycare center with, you know, more than six, and open that up to other things going in, where that fine lines there between residential houses and what she wants to do, which is a need. And that's the conundrum I have, is like, why do we need changes one lot, where something, she sells that something else can go in, when, I guess, we always change it back, but forcibly? But, you know, why would we, why would we need to change that at this, I mean, we have to for her, but that just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think that's something probably we should look at at some point in time. I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's no way to easily attach the variance to the property owner, is there?
Not.
It's connected to the parcel.
Correct.
To the lot.
Yeah.
So, I, I was told, I guess, because the, it was my garage, so we renovated it. And so, it's like right beside my home, but because the door is facing plum, that's why it had to be changed to an R3.
Would that be correct?
That's not correct.
No.
It, it's a number. It's from the seven.
Okay, okay. I was just told.
Yep.
Okay.
It would be required for the seven, which doesn't line up with the state, but that's not the way our zoning code lines up, so.
Okay, so let's talk about that. What do you mean by that?
Well, like she had mentioned earlier, the state doesn't call it a childcare center, and that's the way our zoning code reads, is childcare center, seven or more, and that's, that's what we have. We don't have it called a daycare or something like that. What does the state call it again?
Group home.
A group home? Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, for future references, let's put that on a sideburner about making some changes to the zoning regulations to help out this childcare situation, because thank goodness she wants to do it. I'm like, bless you. But, I mean, it, it doesn't make any sense to me that we need to make this change for that purpose. It makes no sense to me. So, if we could rectify that easily by changing that zoning requirement, let's do so. Now, in this particular case, Greg, I, I have less of a problem with it being R3 when you have R3 right across the street. It's not a spot zoning thing. It's just an extension, for me, it's just an extension of what is already located there in this particular case, so.
Is this something, maybe for future, we could handle with a special use? So, it is kind of attached with a timeline or attached to the property, and the owner uses special S U P?
We could, yes. Through an S U P, then it's a renewal every year, and they take a risk at it could get denied the following year. So, when they go for this R3 zoning under current zone, they've got it, and they don't have to worry about it again.
But it also helps with the issue of, we don't want whatever else, the multifamily going in there. If it's a special use, it does expire, and it does get reviewed, and it does, it's not just like a carte blanche.
Right.
Zoning change.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions? Seeing that, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'm just not sure which criteria is the most appropriate to move. You know, I don't think every use. You know, I don't think every use, we want to say, I guess, criteria A. Yeah, so, so I'd like to move that the application be accepted based on criteria A, that it would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the regulations.
Hey, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a first and a second to approve the motion. Back to discussion for the Commissioners. Any further discussion?
I would speak in favor of the, I mean, I'll speak in favor of the motion. I think that it's appropriate. I mean, you know, why should, why should daycare properties all be on the outskirts of town? Why can't they be in the middle of a community? And again, we're not, granted, not all the uses, and I'm hoping that A and C adequate utilities and stuff far outweigh the other things that would possibly be faced in there. But I, I think it meets a need, I think it's close enough to existing R3 to make that happen, so I'd speak in favor of the motion.
And you guys could adopt the findings of each criteria as written by staff if you wanted to, to kind of make it simpler.
Is that okay with the maker of the motion?
Yeah, that's, that's fine to amend the motion as such. Is that okay?
Yes. Yes.
Any further discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the zoning?
Recommending.
Recommending, sorry. Recommending the zoning? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Staff, any old business?
Don't have any.
Any new business? Seeing none, I'll call for adjournment. And?
There you go.
Just wanted to use the hammer.
Just wanted to use the hammer.
Good evening, everyone, and I would like to welcome everybody to the Newton Historic Preservation Commission meeting and call this meeting to order. There's been a copy of the minutes provided. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at those? And if so, I would entertain a motion for their approval. There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the minutes signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion's granted, passed. The item two is officer appointment, so we need to select our officers for this upcoming year. Isn't that right, Rebecca?
Correct. That'll be a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary position.
Okay, at this time, I would like to nominate the current vice chair to be the chair. He's served diligently in his job and I think he should be promoted. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Mr. Hanson being our chairman signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no.
No.
Too late. Now we need a vice chair. Nominations for vice chair.
Who's not here?
The current chairman of the other one.
Let's go from that to that.
Yeah.
I would nominate Commissioner Bowler to be the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Hear the train of coming. Any other nominations? Hearing no, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Mr. Bowler being our vice chair signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. If it's the will of the new chairman, I'll just finish through this meeting if that's all right, you bet. You have attached the calendar of meetings?
Secretary.
Oh, no, secretary. Of course, I forgot that last month, too. Aubrey has been nominated by the chairman. Is there a second?
Yes.
And there's a second by Jay. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Aubrey continuing to be our secretary signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. I don't mean to forget you every time, forgive me. All right, now we can move on to the calendar of meetings. The calendar of meetings will mirror the, the meetings that we have for the planning commission, so, but I would still entertain a motion to adopt that calendar.
I'll make a motion to adopt the calendar with the same meetings and the planning committee.
Commissioner Newell, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Bowler. Any discussion in regard to the calendar? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Survey updates. What do you have for us, Rebecca?
Sure, we're going to go through these slides pretty quickly. As you know, we are still fulfilling our 2023 Historic Preservation Fund grant of resur surveying. For those of you that were able to attend the Historic Preservation Conference here in Newton, you might have met our consultant Cynthia Amrenim, and she gave us a quick update. We'll just slide through these really quickly. The total building count was, or parcels was 193. 63 of those items had never been surveyed in a previous survey, so that's a brand-new record that's available for us in case a storm, such as when we got a few weeks ago, was to cause further damage, we would at least have a record on file. She did count 14 parking lot parcels. We'd never counted our parking lots before, which again is important because places that are parking lots now, we're not always historically parking lots, so it kits us a fuller picture. And then, of course, the 116 had been previously surveyed, starting in 98. You know there are two historic districts downtown, District One and District Two, that were nominated a year apart. In District One, there are nine contributing buildings with two non-contributing, and in District Two, there are 55 contributing with 12 non-contributing. Again, if there were to be additions or modifications brought forward after this survey and another couple of cycles, that would be something we would go through. So in those pieces that she gave, gave to us, there's 42 that she thinks would be potentially eligible to contribute to a district so far from her count. Those will be brought forward in her final recommendations. Of course, there will be no action in this, it would just be something to consider for a future project. And including in those 14 parking lots would be 21 non-contributing properties. And then this was a rough draft of where those additional pieces are sitting at. This does not align perfectly with our current GIS, but you're going to notice some additions to our district that are based on both architectural significance and historical significance, some in the southern portion, which is a row of our older buildings there in the, that had never been previously brought in, and then some buildings that probably had not earned their significance yet. So again, these findings will be brought more formally to you all, but I wanted to give you a quick update. So that is all I have for you on that item.
Can we get a copy of those slides?
Yes.
Would you mind forwarding those to us?
Certainly.
Okay. Any questions for Rebecca in regard to the survey? All right, item six on tonight's agenda is to review 616 North Main, the windows and doors replacement. Rebecca?
Sure. Okay, so we were very lucky with this property that in one of our previous grants that we had done, we did a walking tour, digital, and that got us a great trove of information, including this photo. So the building you see before you has an original build date in 1880 with a remodel in 1919. This photo was taken in 1920, so this is kind of a big point for us. We don't usually get a brand-new photo of the building from a perfect front to go for. The condition remarks that were in the nomination, this is the rigor building that was built, as it has on the, the name there, from 1920. The condition marks in the original nomination from 98 and then would have come into the Historic District in 2004 show that the ground floor had minor alterations. Many of its modern doors, windows, and awning which obscured the transoms. It retained at that point the original ground floor configuration. It has those insert brick panels. There's that long rectangular panel that, as we can see here, held the signage, but you'll see in the modern photos, has been covered. Second floor windows are 1-1 with the cast stones and lintels and the corbling outside. In your project description that you have, the applicant is asking for replacement of all the front facade windows to configure a match what is in this photo, actually more so than what is in the current seating, and they're going to be keeping that same size and form. As you remember, in our certified local agreement, that while I can make recommendations, it's up to this body to make the final determination, and that you also need to ensure that their proposed project will not damage or destroy a historic property. The ordinance that we have that governs our review of this does discuss deteriorated architectural features, saying that they should be repaired rather than replaced whenever possible. And if in the event replacement is necessary, the new material should match the material being replaced in composition, design, color, texture, and other visual qualities, which you probably will see in your application, that staff finds that those do match fairly well. And your recommendation actions, recommended actions, again, are your dual actions to approve the project, as it will not damage or destroy a historic research. And then it would prove it as per or through modifications as it fits with the local guidelines as, you'll remember this is in a district as well. Stand for any other questions on the project?
Are there questions for Rebecca?
In your packet, there are more of the specifications on the types of window, the sizing, and all of the exact specifications on the window.
Yeah, it looks like you're trying to bring back at least the, the Molyon framing closer to original than, than what was, that's, what's there currently, so, yeah. Questions for the director? The only thing I had, Rebecca, is, is in our form.
Yes.
It actually talks about initials that you'll read this and, and that the Preservation Commission meets the third Thursday of every month we may want to look at.
Oh, my apologies, we must have had it before.
No problem, I'll just, again, to let you know I read these things.
I appreciate that. We do have certain copies of these, but we will, we will edit that.
What, what is the will of the commission?
Make a motion that we approve. How do I say this properly?
If you can make a motion that the project would not damage or destroy a historic resource and that it fits within our guidelines, so this would be the two pieces.
Exactly.
Did you get that down?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion in regard to the motion?
Happy we're updating these windows and downtown and fronts.
Yes.
Hopefully three more coming soon.
We're, we are looking at a lot of revitalization efforts downtown, so it'll keep you guys all busy.
And is that coming mostly from encouragement or just peer pressure? An excellent job by yourself, I'm just, take all the credit if you need to.
I think just to echo tonight's sentiments is that Newton is growing and thriving and in the short time I've been able to serve this community, I've seen nothing but positive growth and a lot of work for people that sit at this bench and multiple boards and commissions, and I think that's overall driving this type of growth and investment in your properties. We do have a small program that the Main Street Board brought forward to the City Commission for facade rehabilitations, and this one did put in an application as well. So I think we're having multiple avenues of support, including from the state, and again, just putting on all the efforts together to move in the same direction for progress.
Excellent. Let's get the street done. So we can park again. If I'm hearing no more discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, finding no harm and that it's well within the guidelines of our ordinance signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Who seconded the motion?
I had good night.
Any new business? Staff?
We do have one other last bit on the item. If we can. Number seven. Yes.
Oh, I'm, I'm going over the, the one that was emailed to me, not the one that was at my desk.
My apologies.
That's all right. So overview of the, the conference.
So I know some of you were able to attend. We did host the 2024 Historic Preservation Conference here in Newton. I'm hoping that if you were able to make even a portion of it, you enjoyed it. I know Commissioner Harris was there and Commissioner Bowler was there. Commissioner Hansen, I'm not sure if you were able to attend, I didn't see you at the Meridian Center, but I know there were some offsite pieces, I was not able to.
I had other things pop up.
Oh, no. Well, again, we were very happy to host them, they were very happy to see our community, happy to get to see some of the excitement, and if anybody else wanted to share anything, we'd be, I'd be more than happy to hear it. I do have some unfortunate news. We did hear back after those meetings on our grant application to go to the National Alliance of Preservation Commissioners, and they did not fund us this year, so that was a little bit disappointing, but they did fund many other valuable projects, so, none of which were continuing education, so I think they were probably doing a lot more survey work this year.
About how many people came?
That's a good question. I know we superseded our numbers and I have not heard the final count. I think we ended up at about, at the peak time, because people came for different pieces, about 120.
Yeah, I would guess, I would guess that. I, I really enjoyed the parts that I was able to attend, from the restoration projects, the, the funding sources that were out there, and, and I was coming up with all kinds of ideas and things that I thought we could, could do, and some of the resources that Rebecca's put together from coloring books and stuff like that, I just thought it's, it really, really promotes historic preservation, and we got a lot to be proud of. And hearing Judge Walker talk about the shoot 'em up days of Newton was definitely a highlight and, and, no, it was, it was really good from learning how to archeologically determine original paint colors by circularly sanding the bullseye method all the way down to, I mean, it was, it was pretty amazing, so, yeah. I'm glad I'm in new, new construction. Really tough.
I attended a session.
Oh, yes, sorry, I apologize.
It was, it was insightful and helpful and good as a newer member of the Historic Preservation Commission, it was good to attend and just kind of learn with the state level and the state folks, talking about what they do and how they support and really help the communities with their designations. So it was, it was very worthwhile.
Yeah, I really enjoyed the program about the mid-century modern architecture in Wichita, which, you know, I grew up in Wichita and so it was all familiar to me and, and buildings I spent a lot of time in, the old library, Central Library, and, you know, thinking about things that historical preservation, you know, hitting those things, those buildings that are, you know, 50, 60 years old and not necessarily 100 years old, and I think there's good opportunity for some of that here in Newton, too, so that was.
And you really missed out on some incredible tchotchkes. I mean, from stress trains that say, you know, Newton waiting on trains since 1872, you know, choo, choo, choose Newton, you know, you're sitting there waiting on a train, you could stress out on that stress train, yeah, no, that's good and, I mean.
What's that? There's one in my truck.
But, you know, it was, it was great. I think you did a great job.
Yeah.
Staff working with, with the state, just really a good time. I really feel that we, you put a really good foot forward with a group who, who a number that I sat with said, oh, yeah, we enjoyed it the last time we were here, so that's good that we could have it back.
Do we have enough places for them to stay or do they have to stay in other communities?
Even though it was over the weekend, we were able to get blocks at the hotels, and we did have quite a number coming in that were more local that just drove in for the day. And we, we tried to make the conference a little bit more modern in its setup. People tend to be coming more for day trips, potentially one overnight, so, but yeah, the response from the hotel, they loved them remodeled Holiday Inn, so we seemed to have had some pretty good, pretty good feedback, actually.
Anything else? Did I miss anything else? Sorry. I was looking at the wrong agenda, so it was my fault, all on me. New business? Anybody? Old business? Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your serp, yeah, I'm never, I never really was big.
Probably is on you.